This conference will now be recorded.
Now you can make them.
Now I'll make a motion to call this meeting to order. And if you can give me a second, I gotta call up my agenda on my phone so I can see what we're doing today.
I'll second that motion. Frank Galusha.
Dorothea, could we have a vote, please?
We can. Trustee Lampier?
Lampier, aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Galusha?
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Mayor Corby?
Corby, aye. Um, first thing, I just wanted to update everybody on the letter I sent to DOT. Uh, and Renee, I'll make a copy of this and I'll email it out to the board. We got a Kevin Bush pushback letter reasserting his authority, especially very negative about the 25 mile per hour speed limit. Earlier today, I met with, um, uh, Bill Smith and Mike Piro from the super, uh, school district. After we adopt the, um, the ATP, uh, the three of us are gonna have a push to push for the 25 mile per hour speed limit. So I'm gonna do an email and I'll update the State Street residents on that and copy everybody on the letter. But I wanted to make all of you aware of that.
Thanks, Bob. Did, um, did they respond to, I mean, the most immediate thing that was asked for? And the reason we started the letter was the transition zones, particularly on, on State Street, um, coming into the village. Did they respond to that? Because our initial meeting with them when we-
No, no, this, this was kind of a generic form letter from Kevin Bush, uh, spelling out the, uh, criteria and, uh, law sections where DOT has, uh, unique authority over setting speed limits on our roads. And it was kind of, it was, the message was, you know, we're not gonna help you. That was, uh, you'll see, you'll see in the letter. I'll, I didn't get, I only have a paper copy, so I've gotta come into the office. I'll do that this afternoon, make a copy and get an email to everybody.
I think we need to laser focus on getting those baby steps, like changing that, those transition zones. So if we can, I mean, that, and that meeting that you and I had with, I don't have in front of me, was that with Joel? Who said, talk to Supervisor Smith, it's the town's heard you, they agree to it, we are open to that. So it seems like we have an opportunity here to get that through without Kevin being involved necessarily. It sounds like-
I think we should move ahead with that. The other thing I was kind of, you know, I've been sort of hesitant to do much of anything until we have the ATP adopted, because it gives us the legal, uh, boost that we need. The other thing that we haven't quoted much, which we probably should, is that we did adopt a complete streets policy that the DOT is supposed to consider, and they have largely ignored that.
And the LWRP also underscores those policies. So like, we have, we have things in place already, and then the ATP will just give it another boost. So, um, I think we, like, particularly, I'm mindful of what the State Street residents asked for us to do. And like, the one thing that I think we have a chance, um, is that transition zone. So let's follow up with Joel or whoever.
Uh, well, let's follow up with, if you'll follow up with Joel, I have another meeting with Bill and Mike next Tuesday as part of our leadership meeting, and we can discuss maybe an interim step to, because the other thing, they were gonna get back to us about final designs for the pet improvements, so we can coordinate things like trees.
Right.
So maybe we can wrap this all into one step.
Okay, so you want me to reach out to him to ask about the transition zones and then also the, um-
The follow, if they have a date yet for the follow-up meeting to look at, uh, the, you know, the stuff we talked about the last time. They were gonna develop more detailed drawings regarding the pet improvements.
Okay, alright.
Great, thank you. Uh, Lily? Lily, you had your hand up, you're muted.
I, you mentioned the leadership meeting, uh, have, have they been canceled or? I just, I have not been notified about them.
At the meeting I was at today, they said there's one scheduled for Tuesday, so I guess I'll ask Dorothea to check on that, uh, because they said it's scheduled to be at Barker Road, and they're gonna provide lunch. It will be socially distanced.
I haven't heard anything on that, so I'll follow up for you.
Thank you. Okay.
Alright. And I just walked into the house, so I don't have an agenda in front of me, and I've gotta find an email to, to-
Okay, intermunicipal agreement, Monroe County.
Bob, would you like me to review this?
Yeah, please.
Okay, um, Bobby received a call from Monroe County regarding an action they were taking with the CARES Act distribution, and requested a copy of everything we have spent due to the pandemic to be up and running, whether it was PPE supplies, computer equipment, webcams, whatever was necessary. So that amount came, I wanna say, it was a little over $4,000, so about 4,200, which included webcams, two laptops, a bunch of Lysol wipes, I mean, anything you can consider that was above our normal usage. Okay, so we submitted that, we received this agreement, and what they need us to do is authorize the mayor to sign the agreement with them. And then they'll be, and it sounds like they'll be distributing a check to us about, he said, maybe in about 10 days. So we'll get that money back that we have spent, so we'll be able to restore those lines. So that's all good news.
Does that include, um, it's probably hard to quantify, um, but, you know, Zach's team has had to split up. So is there, like, is there any-
No, that is not wages, doesn't look at that. It truly is just the PPE and equipment. So like, anything we bought, like the go-to meetings thing we're doing here, the laptops, the headsets I bought for people, the webcams, everything that we wouldn't have normally had to rush out to get. So this was all unbudgeted things due to the pandemic. Staffing, it did not go into labor and all those, it just truly was these items.
But it would include anything that DPW, because you guys had to buy, did you have to buy anything, masks and things like that? It does, all of that's in there, okay.
It's all in there, um, and it was through, like, a couple weeks ago, it ended. So we encompassed, went through back to March, and anything I could grab that qualified in there, I grabbed.
Okay, sweet, that's great news.
It is great news. So just what I need from the board is authorization for Bob to sign the intermunicipal agreement, and then we can get our funds back and restore some of those lines.
So moved. Lampier?
Do we have a second?
Stetser, second.
Thank you. Vote, please.
Trustee Lampier?
Lampier, aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Galusha?
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Mayor Corby?
Corby, aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, next item we have is a non-municipal use permit, uh, for the menorah lighting. We will have to waive the 45-day waiting period. I'll make a motion to approve that with the same conditions, yes.
I just have one change, one change. He would like to start this at 7 o'clock instead of 7:30, which is on the application. He emailed me.
That's fine, that's fine, sure.
Okay.
I accept the 7 o'clock start time. Lily, you had your hand up.
Do I have a clarification, please? Uh, is this affected at all by the governor's mandate about gathering? Um, does that pertain?
Yes, and maybe in your motion, you wanna make sure that that's the comment, that it falls all-
Shall be, shall be in compliance with all, um, guidelines and mandates regarding the COVID crisis safety from the governor's office. Is that okay? Alright, okay. Um, do we have a second?
Lampier, second.
Okay, could we have a vote?
Sure. Trustee Lampier?
Lampier, aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Galusha?
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Mayor Corby?
Corby, aye. Next item we have a little discussion on, um, I don't think we are ready to schedule a public hearing yet, because we don't have, there's an aging requirement, and we need to have a draft of a final ordinance. Um, so everybody understands the issue with Lock 32.
Before, um, the, the planning board met on Monday, so since, since we had our big, long discussion, that's why I added this. I didn't say, I, I, I didn't expect that we'd be able to set a hearing necessarily. So I probably inaccurately described it, but since we're not meeting till December, um, I wanted to make sure we, we talked about this. So do you have, has, has anyone talked to Justin since Monday?
I have talked to both Justin and Steve Loth about this, and Jeff Turner. And, uh, you know, there's several options under, uh, that have been suggested, and I think I wanted to bring it here for general discussion to sort of figure out how we proceed forward. Um, one option is apparently right now, the Lock 32 building is not in the tavern district. One option would be to put that in the lot in the tavern district that would make serving in the pavilion legal per code. Uh, they do have permission to temporarily serve on that terrace, and if they put a temporary tent up over the winter, they could potentially serve within that tent right now. They have gotten that approval from the liquor authority. The other issue is there's parking requirements, which has been an obstacle at the planning board. Uh, Justin Belistras suggested waiving, you know, creating a, a overlay district for the little area between the canal and Shane Place bounded on the west by North Main Street and on the east by Lock 32, where parking isn't required within that district, because you don't really want parking on the canal, and it's similar to the Main Street. I think if you did that, you would have to have some provision that the owner has an overall parking plan, so we don't create a parking crisis or a hardship for existing businesses if there's too much intensity of use and, and a short supply of parking. Um, so right now, we don't have any parking issues in the past. This is an area where we often get parking complaints. So I'm throwing all of that out there and would kind of like some feedback from you. Uh, Steve drafted, uh, something which I think he sent out by email, and talking to Jeff, I think it needs some finessing. Uh, but before I spent much time on that, I just wanted to get feedback from the rest of the board.
I saw, this is Trustee Lampier, I saw nothing, so there wasn't anything-
I didn't get an email either, so maybe-
Yeah, alright, maybe he only sent it to me, and maybe I assumed he sent it to everybody else, but I will, I will get something out. Um, but that's okay, I, I think even if we don't have it, what, I just want feedback from the rest of you of what you think is the best, uh, way to handle this. And then, then I'll, if necessary, I'll draft something from scratch. Um, but, but I, you know, I think everyone's eager to see, make this happen, we just need to figure out the best way of doing it.
That's what I'd like, would like clarified, when we say this, what is the this that we are, what is the goal? If, if the goal is to have, uh, an expansion of use for Lock 32, is that the goal? Or is the goal to have a structure built that would be a public facility, uh, a public enhancement, or whatever you would like to call it, for that area? Because I think we're talking about two different things, and the Lock 32 issue, if you will, let us call it, um, as far as in being able to, uh, enable their business to proceed through the winter months, uh, is not necessarily answered by the building of this pavilion, which is probably not gonna happen, uh, I would assume, until the spring. Uh, at which time the pandemic might have been, we might be past that, and they might not require, have those requirements any longer. So it's, uh, you're asking for a permanent solution to a temporary situation. So it's, I'd like specifics about what, what the goal is. If the goal is to take the building and spot zone it, uh, I'd like a discussion regarding that. Um, where would the, where would the, where would the new zone be? What would it include? Um, I think I'd have a lot of questions, as you say, it's not just a, well, let's just snap our fingers and have this happen. So if the most expedient, if, if the goal is to help this business to be successful through the winter, then I understand that goal, and what, what we may be looking at is a different solution than a, than a pavilion, which is gonna be months before it happens, both as, in terms of our code and in terms of practical building, just to make it happen. So, you know, there might be something in the meantime that-
Well, well, it has been suggested through the winter, and Renee, I saw your hand up, so I'm gonna let you speak next, um, that they could temporarily put a tent up and, and continue to serve in somewhat reasonable weather if, if a tent was put up. That would be a, the planning board could grant them a temporary use permit, and, and that's one temporary option. Um, I, uh, one other clarification, if you take a property that's on the, the boundary of a district, and you move it to the district on the other side, that's not spot zoning. Spot zoning is when you create an island and you zone one particular property different from what's zoned around it. That's spot zoning, and it's discouraged because it, it implies favoritism. Renee, go ahead.
Um, to, to answer Lily's, um, question about what the goal is, at our last meeting, and, um, we said the goal of this was, um, to have a, a pavilion that would be used that, regardless of who is the tenant there, um, could be used, um, for various purposes. So I don't think it, the goal is necessarily for, uh, Lock 32 to be able to operate through the winter. This is part of a bigger vision. Um, so in our last, I guess I have a question, because at our last meeting, we said the Lock 32 issue, where we talked about putting a window in and all sorts of things, um, so that they could serve out of a window. The Lock 32 issue is separate from whether this pavilion, or whatever we're calling it, can be, can be built. It's a Collins property, it's a Collins project, not a Lock 32 project. So why does it matter? What changed since our last meeting at the, the Planning and Zoning Board last meeting, board meeting, um, that now they're concerned that it needs to be, fall within the tavern overlay district? Like, they, they seem to be two separate issues to me. Whether the structure could be built, um, is, is one issue. And then whether Lock 32 or whoever could use it is a separate issue. So what changed? Why, like-
That's exactly, what you're saying is exactly my understanding. And so I, I don't see any impediment to, uh, by change, I don't see why we would need to discuss changing the code to tavern overlay.
The impediment is, let me, let me jump in here. Um, because the impediment, which is come up in discussions that Steve and I have had with, uh, Justin Belistras on the planning board, is Justin's feeling is that he can't, uh, approve something, uh, because they, it would require more parking, and he couldn't do that. So we're, that's, that's the impediment.
I understand that, and I'm on page with that, I understand, and that we would discuss that, but that, that's a separate, separate, uh, discussion and public hearing than the changing of our zoning district.
Right.
So, which is, I think, a much more complex, uh, discussion and ordinance. So, but if you remove that, in that, that discussion, then you can move ahead with the, uh, waiving of the parking requirement, uh, either on a temporary or permanent basis, depending on what the discussion and decision is, uh, and you can move ahead, but I think-
Well, the, the problem, Lily, is the planning board is not willing to waive the parking requirement.
Oh, I see, okay, that wasn't shared, alright.
That's why it's been thrown back in our court, and-
Their complaint was about the tavern overlay district, and that's why it was getting kicked back to us. So we need some clarity on this, and I'm sorry.
Both, both issues have been brought up by Justin. I, you know, I, I think that, you know, the Lock 32 doesn't, it's grandfathered, but it's not located within the tavern overlay district. So if they hadn't, if they amended their special use permit, uh, we wouldn't be able to consider that, because it's not located within the tavern overlay.
It's a lack of Lock 32 project, it's a, it's a Collins-
I, I agree, Renee, but I'm, I'm just wanna share with you all of the discussion that's been had, because as sometimes happens with the planning board, sometimes, you know, things become extreme obstacles, and it, it, it's going to shut this whole thing down. So I'm not, I'm not being an advocate for this, I'm just telling you what I've heard.
What do they need from us, if they're saying now that they're kicking it back to us? What is our action item here?
Well, these, these are just different ideas that have been batted around of what we could do to make the thing approvable by the planning board. Um, you know, and one option would be more flexible, flexible parking requirements for that little strip between Shane Place. I, you wanna think about that carefully, because on the other hand, we have, you know, Carrie Degenhart's property, where the bike shop building is going to be vacated, and you don't wanna have something go in there that overwhelms the limited parking capacity at that end of Shane Place, because there isn't a lot of overflow parking in that area. So, um, you know, I, I wish we had Jeff Turner, uh, here today, um, because I, I think we wanna do the lowest impact thing to facilitate this. And I agree with both Renee and Lily, that the whole concept of this is a gathering, a public gathering spot that allows it to continue the sort of use that we saw over the summer, that really benefits everybody.
It can, uh, can you hear me, Bob?
Yep, go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, I, I talked with Justin a little bit ago, again, um, just kind of to update everybody, and, and trying to get him to understand, as in Renee was speaking, that the Lock 32 issue and this are completely separate items. Whether or not Lock 32 is allowed to use it or does use it is irregardless of the fact that the Collinses are applying for an accessory structure. Um, the, the parking issue is the, the item that's going to, um, hold this up in regards to, because that parking lot between Aladdin's and, and Lock 32 is already substandard based on the use of both of those buildings. Um, there were nine spots, currently there are six in the new, the new makeup. But in talking to Justin, he goes, well, you know, if you actually add all the use of these things, you know, you might need 30 spots down there. So the parking issue is what will hold up this, you know, the, the approval of this, uh, pavilion. So if there's a way to, to remove the parking requirement in that zone, you know, the, the tavern overlay district can be a completely separate thing, because we've already authorized as a municipality Lock 32 to utilize the open air space based on the pandemic. And that, that has been continued up until April 15th, which would get plenty of time to take care of the tavern overlay issue, because the tavern overlay district is, falls way short of Lock 32. I always thought it included it, but it does not.
Right, well, that's what we've, that's, this is Lily, Lampier, uh, that is what we would like to keep totally separate, because it is much more, uh, complex an issue, let us say, because there's a lot to consider there. I'm saying that that would just hold up the whole process to accomplishing what, what I think we're all on page with wanting to accomplish, and that is having, um, a more permanent, if you will, outside area for the public. And that's what's being proposed. So that's what we want to happen, we don't want anything, if we start talking about tavern overlays, then we're gonna go down a, a whole other road, and let's leave that for some other time. So let's just concentrate on, on having this, this, uh, happen. One, that Lock 32 is able to operate to the best that they can through the winter months, through April 15th. Uh, and how could that happen, with a tent or whatever way that, that we can have that happen? That would be one goal. The second goal would be to, um, discuss the parking, uh, new parking requirements, whatever way we would like that to appear. Because there's a lot, there is a lot to consider when you look at that area, uh, Carrie Degenhart's property and the one next to it, hers are just two empty pieces right now. So we don't know what's gonna go in, and what their parking requirements might be. Uh, we have a real estate office which might not remain there if that turns over to another business. We have to think into the future and what, and what, what the possibilities are. So that's gonna require a little bit of, of homework, I think, before we make any ground to changes.
Yeah.
And, and I think going beyond the zoning, you really, you wanna do, if you're gonna, because we just adopted a comprehensive plan. If you wanna make a, that a significant deviation from that, you wanna do a little strategic plan before you change uses. I, I think the parking issue is, is, is maybe simpler to solve, and I'd like to talk to Jeff, uh, to see if we could come up with something that, you don't wanna throw away the parking requirements, but you wanna allow enough flexibility that something like this could be accommodated.
Right, and in the meeting, yeah, and, and just so you know, in the meeting the other night, Mrs. Collins was on board too. And, and the problem right now is if she spent the money on a tent, she may not be able to spend the money and do the pavilion. And a tent is a non-permanent solution. For her to buy a tent that would uphold the weather is $65,000. To rent a tent that will withstand the rush of winter is $2,500 a month. So she, her, her take on is, you know, I may not be able to afford to do this if I have, if I try and do something temporary now. It's gonna cut into the, the vision of the future.
So if the holdup is the parking, which I now understand, it was, um, it seemed more broader than that.
Yes, yes, and there, and there's, there's some minor adjustments on the site plan, you know, I mean, as far as the, the, where the unit is and, and fire lane access and some of those things, which can be easily remedied. But the, the main thing, and it seems to me in Justin's eyes, first off, you know, getting him to keep, he keeps mentioning Lock 32, and I reiterate again, they, it has nothing to do with Lock 32. This is the Collinses looking to build an accessory structure. So if I can get that driven into him, the real issue of holding this up will be the parking.
So what can we, what is our next step on this?
I think our next step is to consider, uh, in a, an amendment to the parking code that gives some degree of flexibility in that area.
And that still is a public hearing?
Correct, but, but you're not gonna have this, the pavilion, I mean, she does have people lined up, but they're still working on some of the design issues of how to enclose this comparably, because, you know, she got a estimate from Anderson, which was like, you could build a whole house for what they wanted to put windows or glass in it. So I actually researched and sent her some things this morning in regards to, uh, some other options as far as enclosing it. Um, and she, she's looking, you know, at some other options to enclose it that are a little more reasonable, but still has to stay within the guidelines of the historical preservation. But if this, if we could figure out a way to move this along, this could, she feels like this could be done during the winter.
So can we, so you're saying we can amend the, the parking requirements that requires a hearing? So we're looking at a month out, um, can we, uh, set the hearing without having the specifics? No, we have to already know exactly, so we need to-
Renee, we could do something as simple, we, we'd have to have a public hearing and pass a local law to amend, uh, the parking requirements. But we could do something as simple as saying, you know, providing an alternative for the fixed formula where it is demonstrated to the, uh, satisfaction of the planning board that there are functional parking resources to address the needs in the area, or, you know, I, I've gotta think a little bit more about that specific language, so we get it right, and we might wanna get some, a little outside guidance, but we could do that, you know, within the next week or so, and then circulate a draft and see how everybody felt about it.
I mean, this is Lily, um, Lampier, again, I wanna be, I wanna be conscientious about following our process as we have in the past, and, and not having it appear as if we're favoring one area or business or situation. Uh, we have, uh, we have researched extensively, uh, issues down in Northfield Common. I'm not saying this very well. I wanna make certain that we give this the same lens and the same, uh, care and that we're not railroading anything or pushing it. Uh, you, you understand what I'm saying, Bob? I'm, I'm trying to say-
No, no, I do, I mean, that's why I'm saying I think we've gotta vet the language-
Absolutely.
-to make sure that we're not opening a Pandora's box of unanticipated consequences where we create a hardship for an existing business, because a, a new, something new goes in and they use up all the parking. You know, I mean, Lily and I have been on the board a long time, we know there's a history of parking complaints in this area. It used to be that Aladins and the Coal Tower were at war over parking. So, you know, that, right now, we don't have to worry about that due to COVID, but we hope businesses come back where the area is full again, and we just wanna make sure that we're being reasonable and not creating a problem.
Exactly, because that, that's a, that is an area that is a magnet for people, and they come for rec- and they come for recreational purposes and park their vehicles there. And there's no way really to control or stop that. I mean, we, we went as far as to consider at one point hiring a parking monitor because things got so tense in the, in the whole area. So it could be that way next summer, we want to avoid that.
Right, but tech, but the, the, the thing is with the design, there were nine spaces there before. There's six now with the new design. So you're only losing three spaces with this design. So how do we, how do we, you know what I mean? Just accomplish that change because I believe it was probably pre-existing non-conforming. And as Justin says, as soon as you touch it, now it's supposed to come into conformance, but it was always non-conforming at nine spaces in that place. And now you're only losing three to accomplish this pavilion. So, you know what I mean? And it, I, I understand caution and, and trying to make sure that you, you know, we want for any loopholes in the future. But I will say this, in speaking with Casey and, and many other businesses, i- if relief isn't found, to help these people in a short order, they could lose their livelihoods. So that, that's the big, the big deal here is that, that these businesses in this, this village are, are at peril right now with what's going on.
Yep, I, I think we, I think we all agree with that.
We get that.
So, so, all right, so let, let's just get an action item here. I think, I, unless there's any other issues anyone wants to bring up. Um, my action item is to draft something and circulate it. And I'm going to talk to Jeff. I want to get his legal thought on this. And I'll try to come up with something that allows this to move forward, uh, but doesn't set a precedent that's going to be um problematic for uh constrained parking in other areas in the future. Is everybody comfortable with that?
Yes.
Yes, and should be. Should we set a date for a, uh, another special meeting just because we'll have to all.
Let, let's, let's, let's get the draft circulated and see if we can get consensus on the board. And then we'll, then we'll schedule special neat meetings as needed and public hearings to keep it moving along. But the first thing, I'm going to call Jeff today, uh, get his input on it and I'll try to get a draft out to you uh sometime in the next few days, okay?
Uh, yes, I just want to say, uh, trustee Galusha, I just want to say that I'm in agreement with the, with the views that have been expressed by Renee and by Lily that this area should be restricted to the public, meaning that um, that it should be a public area and utilized by all of the businesses that are, that are in the area. Um, I think it was very successful during the summer and it was used quite a bit. And I think we should work to leave that as a public area. That's all I have to say.
Okay.
Can I, can I, can I throw, throw one more fly anyway, I mean, just not, not trying to, to do any, but when the original pavilion was built, Bob, you were, obviously you were involved with it, how was, how was, how was the municipality in concert with the Collinses?
The uh, actually, when that was built, um, the part of the parking lot was removed. At that time, the parking went right up to, the whole area was just all asphalt and cars were right up to the tow path trail. And so the, an agreement was reached to reduce the parking, uh, reconfigure it to the uh location that's there today and then uh proceed and everybody benefited in the end.
Okay, I just didn't know if there was any, any kind of, you know, anything involved with the previous one that could be utilized in the, in this one. That, that was my only question.
Well, the, the precedent, which has been there since nineteen ninety-three, is that the plaza was intended to promote public gathering. So in some ways, there's, there's a precedent that's unique to this area because the whole idea about putting that plaza there in the first place is to have a gathering spot on shame place. And this really is in, although it's in the private sector and on private property, it's an extension of that concept.
Hmm. All right, that's why I wanted to throw it out there just because I, Mrs. Collins mentioned it the other night.
No, it's, it's, it's a valid point. I, I would agree, it's a valid point. Um, okay, uh, next thing I just want to add to the agenda. I've talked to Lily and I've talked to Zach. Um, right now, we're in a situation that it looks like we're going to have a string of good weather and candlelight night has been canceled. So Zach proposed, proposed to me the other day is that we focus on leaves. We could potentially get most of the leaves up by Thanksgiving, working through next week, but we wouldn't have enough time to put up the Christmas decorations for the Friday after Thanksgiving. Normally, we don't do that anyway. We scramble to get them done, usually candlelight night is uh the first Tuesday in December, so we have a little more time to get everything up. Is kind of a compromise Zach proposed decorating the tree so the tree could be lit on the Friday after Thanksgiving and everything else would go up in the next few days. Um, I hadn't been able to reach Karen McCready from the chamber. I wanted to sort of float this idea by her. Uh, Zach also told me that he could dedicate two people to decorate the tree. And Lily asked me a question yesterday, Zach, that I wanted to ask you. Um, do you do a, use a lift to decorate the tree? And if you do bring a lift here, should we do the wreaths on the bridge at the same time?
We've used a lift in the past to decorate the tree and we found that it was not necessarily any easier than just going in there with a couple of ladders and a couple of poles to string the lights through there. So I think we're going to stick with the, um, with the ladders and the poles to string the tree for now. Um, but I do have Edwards, uh, Jim Edwards, who helps us out with the, the wreath hanging on the bridges. Um, he's going to hopefully be coming through toward um Wednesday of next week to help us do that.
Okay, great, so the wreath will be up and the tree will be up. So tentatively, oh, okay, all right. So the tree just needs to have lights put on it, okay. So does that make sense to everyone? Everybody's okay with that? Sounds like a yes, okay. I will, I will uh call again Karen McCready today and try to reach her and just make sure the chambers in the loop so they're aware that everything may not be light lit on the Friday. At this point, I, given the surge in the virus and everything, I don't think there's much downside to that. Okay, the last item we had on our agenda, I just timed out on my phone. What is the last item, um, Dorothea?
Staffing.
The staffing, but Zach, I think, wanted to jump in on something.
Oh, I'm sorry, Zach, you had something else, go ahead.
Yes, we have another item. Um, Zach, Zach, you want to go ahead?
Sure. Sorry, this wasn't on the uh, the agenda, but this is something that I've been working on and it finally came through. So I figured now would be a good time to do it rather than waiting for December. Um, I originally proposed to purchase a new Bobcat to replace the one that we have. And now that um we know where we ended up with the Village Grove project and what we still have available through the CHIPS, DWR and A New York funds. Um, I went through and finalized the quote for the new Bobcat T four fifty. Um, it's still the same price, but uh I was originally thinking of putting the S one thirty and the attachments um to auction. But I think at this point, um, it would just be as easy, if not easier, and approximately the same amount of money would come from it to just trade it in. So I've got quotes for uh the purchase of the new T four fifty along with the two new attachments, which is the snow V blade and the uh snow blower. The ones that we have currently are a few years old and um we can't use state funds to purchase attachments or equipment that we've already purchased. So if we were to get the attachments, now would be the time rather than waiting till later, uh, because we would have to use uh money out of the budget to be able to do so. So I had a couple quotes drawn up for um, for the loader or for the uh, the Bobcat itself with the trade-in value. The trade-in value was offered at twelve thousand dollars. Um, so that brings the price of the T four fifty with the trade-in to twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and fifty-two dollars and sixty-two cents. Along with that, or is the trade-in of the two attachments or new attachments. Um, the new attachments, uh, the V blade is three thousand seventy-seven dollars. The snow blower is thirty-three hundred and forty-six dollars. With the trade-in of what we have, uh, lower that cost down to four thousand seven hundred and three dollars. So for the purchase of the new T four fifty, along with the two new attachments and with the trade-in, it would cost three, thirty-four thousand six hundred and fifty-six dollars and six cents, which would all be uh put under the CHIPS on uh fund from uh New York State. So it wouldn't cost the village anything and it would kind of solve the problem of getting rid of the T or the S one thirty at the same time. And we'd have a new piece of equipment with two new pieces or two new attachments ready to go hopefully in the next month.
It, it makes sense. It, it definitely makes sense. Zach uh talked to me yesterday about this. Um, I would make a motion to authorize buying the piece of equipment with the attachments.
And I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? If not, Dorothea, would you call a vote, please?
Sure, trustee Lanfier.
Lanfier, aye.
Trustee Stetser.
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Galusha.
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Mayor Corby.
Corby, aye.
Motion passes.
Anything else, Zach?
So I've got, thank you guys very much.
Okay, um, we will be interviewing shortly for a new uh staff person for DPW. Um, those are, uh, Dorothy is going to schedule them, so I expect uh within the next week we'll set up some interviews. Um, then, and on that topic, moving to uh the next topic, which is office staffing. Uh, we did have a me- uh, meeting of the um, office staffing subcommittee. Um, and Mary has put together some budget numbers. Uh, and ma- maybe Mary, you want to talk a little bit about what you found out?
Okay. Um, Dorothy, are you going to put this up on screen for everybody?
Yep, I'll throw up the numbers.
I'll wait till she does that. Okay. Currently in the budget, we have for the position of the treasurer, which is full-time, not filled, just salary alone is sixty-two four hundred. It's on the, the high side. With benefits, which is another twenty-four thousand, which is covering health, dental, HSA, um, also not including social security and retirement, which I didn't think to do earlier this morning. The total cost for a full-time position for the treasurer is eighty-six thousand four hundred. All these monies are currently budgeted. By comparison, right now, I am, if you take my hourly rate times twenty hours times fifty-two weeks, just as a comparison, there are no benefits with my position. I am costing the village basically forty-six thousand eight hundred. So in this holding zone that we're in, it would be, it's a total savings of thirty-nine thousand seven hundred for the year. To date of the forty-six thousand eight hundred that is allocated basically and for my job, I've used up seventeen thousand, leaving me with a balance of twenty-nine eight hundred. So that's just as a comparison. Um, the difference between the budgeted position and mine, if we had a real treasurer in place, is ninety-seven, ninety-four hundred. And the savings from the benefits is an additional ten thousand to date. So that's a total savings of nineteen thousand four hundred. The deputy clerk position is what we are looking at, which is a part-time position, not filled. It was budgeted for eighteen thousand seven twenty. To date, because it wasn't filled, we have saved seventy-eight hundred dollars in that position. So the seventy-eight hundred plus the nineteen-four is a total department savings of twenty-seven two hundred. To change the deputy position to a full-time, um, which would be taking the eighteen dollars per hour times forty hours times fifty-two weeks would be a salary of thirty-seven four forty. Um, we have unused and a ten thousand nine hundred twenty dollars. So still, if we take that money and apply it to the position, we would still have a department savings of sixteen thousand two eighty. What I'm basically saying is that we flip-flop the monies around right now. We would still are within budget and um we could move forward with a lot of, of benefit in it. Couple of things, when Jen was in here yesterday, she said, just in her realm of work, she covers three villages and four towns, all of which are looking for treasurer position. So that treasurer position is like scant to be found, um, as far as getting anybody filled in there. Also, with the treasurer position, uh, that runs at the pleasure of the mayor. So if there is a change of mayor in March or April, um, God forbid, but this person runs at the pleasure of the mayor, there, so that person may be looking at an appointment of only six months, uh, tentatively speaking. So the deputy clerk would eliminate that hassle. So what we're looking for is somebody to do full-time and take a little bit of the relief in, off my job and off of uh Dorothea's as well. So that person would do all the cash receipts collections, the cash disbursements, prepare the abstract, which is what I'm doing for the village right now. Minutes, phone, it would, should be, or he would be a backup for Dorothea and Linda for the three boards on the Zoom meetings or uh public meetings, depending on what would happen. Uh, website, newsletter and other duties as assigned. Um, so what our proposal is from all of this is to uh put in for a full-time deputy clerk position instead of a full-time treasurer position. This is reflective only for this year when we would be budgeting for next year, we would have to look at this again and see where the board would want to do that. The other thing with the deputy clerk position, if she or he would work out in handling the money aspect of it, it would give them an opportunity to step up into the treasurer position. And then again, we would have um the deputy clerk position open, but that would be further discussion. Dorothy, did you want to add anything to this?
No, I think you covered it, Mary. Um, it really isn't going to cost the village any more money to make this change. And if anything, we might have better look, luck looking at a deputy than a treasurer because when we were looking at a treasurer, we're looking at all the specific treasurer duties. When we're looking at deputy, it's a little looser. We can find someone, maybe find someone who actually can fill that treasurer position that we can train and bring in to actually do the duties as needed. So it does provide someone with an opportunity.
And, and I, I would also add to that, that Dorothea, Mary and I have talked and vetted different proposals extensively in coming to this conclusion. But after looking at the, 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 you know, really poor selection of uh applications we received in the first round to find a fully qualified treasurer, um, and the difficulties that Mary mentioned, this really does make sense. I think it better addresses some of the needs in the office, especially for some of the secretarial work that's time-consuming. And in particular, because the lockdown uh is continuing, the burden of doing the minutes of aidum has increased, increased the workload in the office. And it really has put a, a, a very high burden on Mary and Dorothea this year. Mary has worked for free beyond the hours that we pay her for. Uh, Dorothea, I often see her, her working here at uh late at night. So I will make the motion to authorize us to advertise for this position. Jenny, I'm in a meeting, I'll call you after, okay? Thank you, bye. Um, I would make a motion to authorize Dorothea to put an ad in so we can uh try to solicit applicants for the position that Mary described. Do I have a second?
Lanfier, second.
Discussion?
So, uh, can you go over again why um a part-time deputy clerk, somebody doing the part-time deputy, deputy clerk wouldn't be uh possible? possible? That it needs to be a full-time person?
But let me just realistically, looking at the staffing of the office, okay? Yeah, we have long-term goals that we really need to address and, you know, we talked about this trying to save money last year. We really need two more full-time bodies in this office. I can't change that fact. We have older staff. We have people that could leave us at any time. You're putting a lot of, and I don't want to say, you're throwing a lot of burden on just trying to have two full-time bodies to cover the needs. Because when one of us is out, the other one is answering phone in the afternoon, doing other duties. You're paying a lot of staff money to do those duties. And I'm not saying we're above it. That is not what I'm trying to say. What I'm saying is you need me focused on other areas. Right now, we're functioning on one and a half. So we're, and we're drowning. I, I, I'm not even joking. We are drowning. I'm trying to take time off. I can't take. This is a problem with the board. You, I have to come to you again. December's coming. I have four weeks of vacation on the books I cannot take. Okay, I'm trying. You can talk to Bob, talk to Mary. I continually tried to do that. Overall, we need two bodies now.
And I can, let, let me, uh, jump in here, Dorothea. I can vouch for that. I'm in the office almost every day of the week. And I, I'm pretty, have a pretty good handle on the workflow and, you know, and I know the history. And I've seen the increase in workflow. Um, in the past, we've had three full-time people in the office. And we've, you know, it's a miracle that we were able to get by this year with all the things that were thrown at us with so little staff. And that speaks to the quality of both Dorothea and Mary and, and the burden that they've taken on. But I think to be responsible, uh, so people can take vacations and the office, uh, can still function. We have gone through every staffing option we can think of, uh, considering both the overall fiscal cost as well as the functionality, scheduling and safety for the office. I think this is a responsible choice. Um, Mary and Dorothea really are the experts in the work demands in the office. We've done a task list, a scheduling list through the year. I don't know how we could be more thorough in the analysis that's been done of the work needs in the office. And, you know, this, this proposal still keeps us about $10,000 below what we had projected with our previous, uh, staffing plan that was anticipated in this year's budget.
Well, it sounds like it does need, or, uh, part-time is not gonna, is not gonna get.
Part-time is never gonna solve the problem. It was gonna help. And right now, with the shift to the full-time deputy, that gives us a little breathing space because we have Mary here. And then we can recess with the treasurer and maybe we'll find that diamond in the rough. We can move that person into the treasurer, then look at further staffing needs as to whether we need a full-time receptionist, what we need to actually keep functioning. I mean, we, we have to make these changes. We just do.
I would also say, in, in deference to what we did for the DPW this year, understanding that the quality of the workforce is necessary, uh, to, you know, continue the services that we provide. I think we have to give the same level of attention and support to our office staff as well. And, and I think we're blessed right now with a, an amazing crew, uh, that, a team that works for the service of our residents. I think in my years as mayor, I think the staffing that we have now is, is among the best we've ever had.
And I'd like to just add one other thing and thank you back for the compliment for the office. Um, the deputy clerk position would.
Bob Corby, I'm in a meeting. Can I call whoever this is back?
The deputy clerk position.
Thank you. Will do.
This past budget year was reduced from a full-time position to a halftime to accommodate the pandemic problem that we're having. So actually what we're asking for is to restore the, the deputy clerk position back to a full-time, uh, full-time unit rather than part-time because it's what really makes the most sense for us here in the office and helps us to, uh, get the work done. And I'm here to ta- try to, uh, get the new person or, or at least this deputy person to, uh, learn some of my job and hopefully that this male or female can transition to a treasurer position. We'll have to see. The other part of the problem that I'm also dealing with is our current, uh, representative from the CPA firm Jen is taking on a new job. So I will be also having to train the new CPA replacement here. So it, it's giving us a lot of extra burden here. So if I, if this would really help us out in the long run in many, on many levels.
The other, the other task we have, which in, uh, Mary met with Jen yesterday from the CPA's office, is Jen had a suggestion to help us, um, address the controller's recommendations by changing, instead of keeping separate, uh, CD accounts, having one big CD account with, with different divisions. That's gonna take some time for Mary to figure out how to do that. And, and again, you know, it, it exceeds really the, the viable hours that she has now in office. Getting some relief will allow us to move forward with that, which is an imperative, given our recent audit and follow-up audit by the controller's office.
Correct. And there'll probably be more savings because it's, let's be reasonable. This is gonna take us a month if, I mean, to find the right person. Is, we know the pandemic's kicking up, trying to interview, do all these normal things that have to happen. We are adding to that savings. So the deep, the village office is not gonna go over budget. The bottom line is we're gonna stay in budget this year. And, you know, next year we'll take a hard look and maybe we'll be in better fiscal spot, but we need to make this change now.
Okay, all right. Any other discussion, questions? All right, Dorothea, would you call a vote, please?
Sure. Trustee Stetser?
Stetser, I.
Trustee Galusha?
Trustee Galusha, I.
Trustee Lanfear?
Lanfear, I.
Mayor Corby?
Corby, I.
Motion passes and Mary and I thank you from the deepest part of our hearts.
Yes, thank you very much.
Hopefully we'll have an applicant soon.
Okay, I, before, before you end the meeting, I just have a couple of little things. Bobby, you touched up. And one thing I did want to again reiterate to the board, Jen is leaving us. And, uh, so I will be having to train a new person with us whenever she comes through. But her, uh, some of her parting words were that we do really need to redo this, uh, sewer fund CDs to something that's more reasonable, that, um, reflects today's needs for the sewer fund rather than what was put into place before I had even gotten here. So that's a project that, uh, I will need Frank and Bob's help on. And we also need to reallocate fund balance, uh, because our fund balance on the sewer fund is sitting at around 700,000, which is at minimum 350,000, too much to, uh, satisfy the controller. We should be like around 150,000 in that fund, no, and really no more.
So it has, so, so it has to be split into targeted funds addressing specific needs.
Okay.
Correct. So that's a big issue and, um, I need to get that taken care of. And the other item that I, I would just like to remind the board, I had paid out all the Zoglin bills that were outstanding. The only thing that left was left was still on, uh, invoice number 679. I paid off a portion of it. But forty, approximately $4,500 of that bill is from August and is in contention. So um, I think from the last meeting when we spoke about all of this, we, um, board approved just a portion of it and the rest of it was left out. But there was no follow-up as to who was going to follow up with Mindy to address what those charges were or whether or not they were um, valid or, well, I don't know, fail, it's probably not the right word, but, uh, justifiable bill for the, for the village. So I think uh, the board should make a decision on who will be talking to Mindy about the bill because we should get it paid. It's since or not paid. It's open since August.
Okay.
Okay.
Did we, Dan just joined, so that you might know, did, uh, who was reaching out to Zoglin? Uh-oh, you're on mute.
I was gonna propose that, um, Frank do it because he seems to be the one that really has the question around this. So I'm, I'm happy to do it, but, um, that's a middleman approach. Whereas Frank seems to have the direct concern. So Frank, do you want to do it?
There's a, I don't mind, I don't mind to do it, but I, I, I really think Dan, you and the mayor should do it. There are basically, there's, there's basically one problem. The invoice charges us with about $3,000 to take an affidavit from Susan Loda. And there's another charge for roughly 2,000, uh, that we have to pay one of their research people to research something that our building inspector should do.
Frank, I'm happy to do it. After this meeting is done, I'm gonna come into the office. I have a few things I have to do. I'll add it to my list and I'll get an answer. Okay?
That would be fine.
Okay, I'll, I'll do, I'll do it today. All right. Um, anything else before we adjourn? Okay, I'll make a mo- yeah.
Bob, just a minute. Before you do, before you do call Zoglin, let's go over what the issues are so that you're, you're informed, fully informed as far as what the problem is.
I'll give you a, when I get into the office, Frank, I'll give you a call and, um, we'll go over that. Okay?
Okay, good. Renee?
Uh, one, one question, not about the Zoglin bill. Um, Dorothea, at our last meeting, we, uh, were discussing whether the town was able to schedule active transportation plan hearing virtually. So what's happening? Are we still on, on task for the hearing on the second of December or has that been stalled?
We are still on task for the hearing on the second. It is still scheduled publicly. I spoke to the clerk. Um, she was gonna speak to her lawyer. She's gonna wait to hear back from the supervisor. And Bob was gonna talk to the supervisor and I think, Bob, you can follow up on that point.
I have spoken to the supervisor. Their plan is to still do it virtually. It remains to be seen at the, um, the county informational meeting on COVID yesterday. Dr. Mendoza is concerned about the surge and worried that we may get into the orange, uh, uh, criteria. If that happens, um, the town will probably have to come up with a different plan.
Wait, so what you just said was different than what Dorothea said. Dorothea said they're still planning to do it in person and you said they're planning to do it virtually.
No, 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 no. They're, they still are planning to do it. Uh, I misspoke. They still are planning to do it in person. The plan is everyone in the room will be socially distanced and they will allow people to come in at a limited number to maintain safe distance. That's how the, the current plan is. Whether that's allowed under an orange classification, I don't know. Um, so there's some, still some uncertainty.
Okay, I think it's irresponsible to attend. I'm not comfortable attending. Um, so not with the surge. So we, we seem to be at a, a bit of a, a, a sticking point here. So am I allowed to, 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 I mean, what, what do we, what do we do here? I don't think it's good for that many of us to be in the room.
Well, if we go to orange, it's a limit of 10, so we already are over the numbers. We're close to the numbers.
It wouldn't be possible in orange, Renee. So I think maybe we just hang tight for a week, see where things go and then go from there. You do have a right not to attend if you feel, uh, and they are going to allow people's comments to come in, I believe, live, right, Dorothea? Did I hear that correctly?
There was something that they can broadcast the whole meeting and have Zoom people comments be received virtually. Um, I informed the clerk that my board has not met publicly since the pandemic and is not comfortable. And not to speak for everybody, but I think I got the sense from the board a long time ago, you are not comfortable meeting in public, given the situation. And I said to her, by the time you start adding board members, lawyers and everybody and secretaries, you're at 25. So, and my understanding with a public meeting, you can't limit the number of people who want to attend.
Right. And we're gonna be there a long time. I do not want to sit. I mean, I haven't even been to a restaurant inside. It's just like, I'm not, I, like, I'm not gonna risk it, um, for sitting for three hours with, I, I think it's a, an irresponsible. I think it's irresponsible to, to carry it in person. And so it sounds like we have a bit of a disagreement here. And we, we had agreed that we were gonna post it both ways, so we did to give us an option. Um, I don't know.
Maybe, maybe Renee, maybe something we could explore is if our board is virtual, if they want to be live, let them be live and we're virtual. Maybe that's especially in light of the surge, that might be more responsible for us.
Yeah, can you, are we allowed to do that a, as part of the, the governor?
I don't know, but I'm, I'm gonna, I'll, I'll look into the legalities of it and see if it's possible. Okay?
We'll follow up with Turner. Um, but to let everybody know, I've heard from the county. The county has given us their feedback on the plan. They had no comment. I have been receiving secret responses back, so everything is moving along swimmingly for December 2nd.
Okay.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, all right. Motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Um, Dorothea, please call a vote.
Trustee Stetser?
Thanks, Dan. Stetser, I.
Trustee Galusha?
Trustee Galusha, I.
Trustee Lanfear?
Lanfear, I.
Trustee Keating?
Keating, I.
Mayor Corby?
Corby, I. Thank you, everyone. Take care.
Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving if we don't talk to you.
You too.
Yes, happy Thanksgiving.
Bye-bye.